Everybody to the Berwick Planning Board, regular meeting for Thursday, March 15th, 2018. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, Planning Board members present tonight, regular member David Dow, Niall Shore, the Vice Chair Paul Bover, and alternate member Mike LaRue, absent Nicole Fecto and Sean Winston. So, tonight for voting, Mike LaRue will be a voting member to give us five. Moving on to public comment sessions, open to any resident or property owner in the town of Berwick to come forward and talk about anything relating to the Planning Board. Please feel free to come forward if you'd like to talk. If not, forever hold your peace. Seeing nobody come forward, close the public comment session. Also, in attendance tonight is our Town Planner as well. Moving on to approval of minutes for the March 1st, 2018 meeting.
I wish James were here tonight because he did a slam-bang, perfect job.
Bang-up job. He did. Motion will be for approval of the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded. Further discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your hands. Abstaining?
Yes, I wasn't here.
One abstaining. Old Business. Findings of fact, conditional use application for Misty Boyd, 8 Wilson Street, map U4, lot 140-1. So, with this, if you remember from last week, we approved this application, but we did not have the findings of fact at the time. We got them last week in the email. Thank you very much for getting those to us. We felt confident going forward that we would be able to approve that application and then approve the findings of fact at this meeting. So, we have to approve the findings of fact, facts, and then we have to approve the conditions of approval, which there are no conditions of approval. The only change that I had James make, and he did not do that, is I'm going to change the date on here. So, I noticed this here at the --
On the bottom?
Yeah, I noticed it. Yeah.
Oops. Apologize.
I brought it up to him, but that's okay. And it was approved by the -- this decision was approved. So, that would be -- I would make that March 1, correct?
Correct.
Anything else on here?
I'd like to comment. I like the new format. I'm not sure that was your --
It's a slight change from what you had before, but I don't want it to be much.
Yeah, there's like a preamble to the findings of fact, and, you know, it kind of sets the stage for what you're going to look at.
Great, thank you. And that's what the findings of fact are supposed to do, is set up what the board has done to date through the process.
I think it's good.
Great, thank you.
I've read them, and I -- to the best of my memory, they seem fine.
Do we have motions to approve the findings of -- excuse me, do we have a motion to approve the findings of fact?
I'll make the motion that we approve the findings of fact as written.
I'll second.
Seconded. Further discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your hands. Okay? Abstaining with one, Niall Shore. Okay, so that's 4-0 with one abstaining, and there's no conditions of approval to vote on because it was pretty straightforward. So, that's all set. We're all set on this. I'll sign another copy instead of this. I'll wait for James to just correct that.
On that topic of any conditions, usually we have some conditions. Like in this case here, I think the parking was none -- you know, they had made an agreement with the Methodist Church, and that should hold, you know. If that drops out, then what happens to the parking? That kind of thing. I'm not saying that that should be one of them, but...
Yeah, because it's not addressed in five. Okay.
And it was mentioned in the findings of fact that there is an agreement, but if something like that falls through, then do you have to call places that are required?
Yeah, that's a great question. And of course, unfortunately, I wasn't part of the whole discussion with you folks on that project, but I'm not sure what you did have a discussion with the applicant. But yes, the concern would be, what if that agreement goes away, then what? And I'm not sure how that could have been addressed as a condition from the standpoint of, you know, what's the fallback position? I think that would have clearly had to been a discussion with the applicant along the process. And again, not being part of it, I'm just not sure what, if any, excuse me, if any fallback position she may have had.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know if we can necessarily -- we can't go in court.
The other ask --
I can't say if you lose, you know, five of your parking places at the Methodist Church. I mean, the other interesting thing is, the Methodist Church has been using her driveway for quite a while now, I think. You know, I'm not sure how long, but...
So, the other way to deal with it --
So, it's kind of a shared --
Right.
I can't see it changing.
Yeah.
So, maybe we shouldn't worry about it, but...
Well, I guess two things is, the other way to deal with it, unfortunately, is if parking continues, it becomes an issue, and that agreement goes away, it certainly becomes an issue that the code enforcement officer is going to have to work out with her in the future as far as, well, you had an agreement, you know, and we've got parking issues here now that aren't being addressed. We're going to need to address them. The other issue is monitoring her parking situation and seeing if she really is having enough parking in any one time that, going forward, that there is an issue there. So...
And it may go away, too, when the village overlay kind of pulls that area in.
Right.
That may change the whole parking.
Very well could. Very well could.
So, maybe, you know, that's just not something for us to worry about.
At least in the short term.
It'll work itself out.
It could, absolutely.
That's about all I -- I just found it strange that there were no conditions of approval.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever done that before, where we didn't have conditions of approval.
Excuse me, not knowing your process, do you have some standard conditions of approval that you want or need in all of your findings, or is it basically project by project?
There's some standard. If you go back and look at some of the old ones.
Okay.
I mean, it's usually notification being given to all the other departments. Oftentimes, it's the police chief signing off, the fire chief signing off, and there are others. But if you go back, there usually are two or three that are pretty much always there, is my recollection.
Yeah, like this one here. "Any modification to the conditional use plans in application as approved prior to being made must also be reviewed, approved by the Planning Board."
Okay. I will pick those up and make sure that, going forward, they're in any of our projects.
So, we just don't worry about them this time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we've already then approved the findings of fact, which is a different matter. We don't say anything about conditions of approval then, or?
Well, there's nothing to vote on.
Yeah, correct.
We just noted in our minutes that there were no conditions of approval.
Correct. And the findings, as you mentioned, did state at this time that they have an agreement. So, going forward, that I'm going to monitor that.
Next on Old Business, it says here findings of fact, but we're actually going for approval this evening for -- what's that? Preliminary approval for the findings of fact, and also looking at the findings of fact and approving the conditional -- the conditions of approval tonight. We didn't do any of that the last -- but anyway, conditional use application, medical marijuana production facility, paper birch property LLC, map R70, lot 12-1, 357 Portland Street. Do you have anything on that?
Excuse me, on the project itself, the applicant has provided a revised plan that added some trees on the front and on the westerly side of the property as discussed along the long face of the building. I think that I had no issue with them. You folks may still have, I don't know, but I thought that, based on the conversation that we had at the last meeting, that the few trees that were added did what I thought the discussions were with the applicant at the time. So, and I believe that was the only outstanding issue that we had.
Yep, you're correctly, Jay. Again, Cheffaliva was civil consultants. So, what we did is, after that meeting we had two weeks ago, I went back and looked at the plans. And what we are proposing to do is add at least seven white pines along Portland Street that will be, at a minimum, at planting four feet tall to be interspersed in any kind of gaps there that are created. And then we also have, on the southern side, provision for at least six on that side to intersperse, be interspersed and fill in any gaps on that edge of the property on there. And it seemed like that was, you know, the consensus of the board and the discussion that we had at that meeting was to be able to do that and to infill that. The only other note I added was, I added a couple notes because Nicole had a question about the holding tanks, and I just put a leader that indicated that, just called them out on the plan.
Yeah.
Those were the only other changes. And then when we talk about the findings of fact, and we get to that part, and we talk about the conditions, I went back and forth with Lee Jay, and I made sure that one of the conditions of approval in there, made sure that included, and it's really in particular, condition number four, that with respect to certificates of occupancy, that we made sure that the odor control aspects were covered in that condition. So, other than that, that's been the change on the plan.
Correct.
Adding those trees on that side, on those two sides, I should say. Other than that, everything remains the same. At the last meeting, you know, we presented all, we presented to the town and staff all the information we have from all the varying departments and showing that we're compliance with the zoning ordinance.
We did have our -- as a note, we did have our public hearing two weeks ago.
Yep, two weeks ago.
And we had one person that spoke, but not in a butter, the person that spoke.
That's correct.
None of the butters spoke. And so, I appreciate, even if they were not here to say something, that you did -- I feel that'll be important down the road.
Yep.
You know, as far as where the residential neighbors are.
Yeah, and I think once we talked about, I talked about that with the client afterwards, that was, that's how we came up with that plan, to show those and come up with, you know, a tree that's established, you know, fairly established, that will grow quicker than something small.
Yeah, that's good. And, you know, white pine are fairly common.
Yeah, and it will fit in that soils, in that soil group, that sandy soil group out there and work very well.
I noticed that, like on L3, the third sheet, which are, you know, construction details, you also added screening trees, but...
Yeah, I added the detail for the planting of the tree on sheet L4. Is that what you're --
So, even if there's no details on the planting of trees at L3, you're still a date of date.
Yeah, I update, because it's a full plant set, and we make sure that we have this full set has all, everything has a revision block on it, so that there's only one set floating around that's the most current, and it's a complete set.
Is it clear in here that our code enforcement office will be in control for whether there is an odor issue on?
Yes. Yeah, I think that comes clearly on the plans and also in the conditions of approval, and it comes in, and more particularly, in the odor control plan that we submitted talks about making sure that the code enforcement has the authority for that.
Yeah, and I know you said that verbally more than once.
Yep. And it's in writing on the plan. We have those odor control specific notes that are on the top left of the plan. We have verbiage in our, you know, letter document that has the odor control. So, that's called out, that the, clear that the code enforcement has.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, because I don't want this to end up, you know, like a litigation-type issue where somebody says, no, it smells great. Other people say, no, it doesn't.
No, it comes down to code enforcement.
Take a look at condition of approval four.
Yeah, and that's where we made sure that that was added on, added into that --
In here, the --
Into the approval.
Correct.
You see what we're talking about?
In the findings of fact.
The very beginning.
It's part of the finding.
Go in your book.
I can read it to you, Paul.
Under three.
I can read it to you, but condition four says certificates of occupancy shall not be issued until the code enforcement officer has made a determination that all requirements, including parking areas, fencing, and the odor control filters have been installed and the standards have been met according to the plans and the conditions above, as approved by the Planning Board. Puts most of the burden right on the code officer to make sure that
You mentioned preliminary, but this will be a full approval tonight. We know preliminary approval.
We had a complete application, I thought, at the last meeting.
And the public hearing.
And a public hearing. So, it would be --
And the public hearing, but did we actually go through the preliminary approval process? That would be in the minutes, right?
I would assume this is a conditional use site plan review, so it would be initial meeting, set a date for a public hearing, if you do a site walk. I apologize again coming in the middle of this one.
Which we did.
And then having your public hearing, and then you're voting on the application.
Okay.
It would not be a preliminary approval.
You're right. And I think I'm confusing this with having subdivision.
That's what I was going to say, subdivision, right?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
True me for a loop there, because I'm sitting here going, what is this?
You know, you need short timers like him to...
You should be fresh.
Oh, yeah, right. You have your knee cut off and you're so fresh, you don't even --
You are fully rested.
Do we have any other questions on the findings of fact? So, the first thing that we will vote on this evening will be approval of the findings of fact. Looking for a motion for approval of the findings of fact.
So, move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded. Discussion. Okay, seeing no further discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your hands. Okay, that's 5-0. Okay, moving on to conditions.
And I apologize on that. There's a page break in there, and I fiddled with that for a long time, trying to get the page to come back up around, so...
That's okay.
I don't understand what happened there, but...
The one change I'll make here, he made the change at the bottom of the signature block, but also this decision was approved by the Planning Board at its March 15 meeting. So, James, James, please make that change.
And also here, too, you've got to do that.
But you know what? He did it on mine over here, after I brought it to his attention, so I have a different copy here. So, questions? Any further discussion on the conditions of approval? This motion will be for approval of the conditions.
So, move.
Second?
Seconded, and we have further discussion. Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's 5-0. And then finally, approval of the application.
I move to approve the application.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's 5-0. All right, there you go.
Thank you. I'm back for that one.
Oh. You just can't get enough of us.
I can.
Can't get enough of us. All right. Moving, continuing down to Old Business here. Sketch plan, major subdivision 115, Old Pine Hill Road, map U7, lot 47, applicant LRB Leasing. What do you got?
What have I got? I apologize. I'm trying to get my act together here. I think I did do a memo for you. I did not print it off myself.
You did.
But basically, I think, I'll try to keep it, I think for the purposes of, from a sketch, unless you're concerned, I noticed that the applicant has redesigned the application from a previous design and dropped down, excuse me, by one unit from what was originally proposed there. I took a look at the wetlands analysis that they did for your net residential calculations, and I had no problem with that. I think the one issue that I'm, again, wasn't at the first meeting that you had on this, but the question, I think, for the applicant of interest would be that their density was at 16.9, which I assume you allow rounding up on that. So, the curiosity would be what, if anything, is going to happen to the parcel which is actually, the portion of the parcel which is actually not in bad shape on Pine Hill Road, because the property does go through to Pine Hill Road. So, I think that's a question that we want the applicant to talk about tonight. Other than that, I, from a sketch proposed, sketch point of view, I didn't have any other issues on the application. We might get into more issues once we get into a preliminary design, more engineering is put to the paper, but at this point, I'm fine with where you're at.
All right. Mr. Aliva.
So, I'm covering some for somebody else that couldn't make it here, but as I understand and was told, what we've done since the last time you've seen it is basically two things. Our, we had a high-intensity soil survey done to be able to calculate the density, and we came back out that this plan shows 16 units on it. I don't know much about the connection to Pine Hill Road and what's going to go on with that, but I'll talk to other staff in there. But the other change here is that, I think the first time you saw, there was one road coming in, and it kind of went to a cul-de-sac or whatever, and the buildings were on the outside. We've changed the entrance to look at along the road to have a one-way in and a one-way out, to kind of create a loop that way, and wanted to get the boards' feeling on that approach to be able to control traffic or have better access into the site. We've checked the site distance requirements. Everything still meets the standards for that, but changing it to kind of a loop access in and out as opposed to having one driveway in for all units. What's the board's feel about that kind of a design for access?
This looks a lot different than the last set of plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment? Because we, I don't believe we've had a site visit on that lot.
No.
And I think before we, you know, I would like to reserve judgment. I actually liked the picture better than the initial one.
Okay.
But I think it would make sense to take a look at the spot.
Yeah, I think as we go, because I think we're still, as part of the sketch plan kind of concept, so when we get in the preliminary, the site walk makes sense for that.
Before you give opinions.
Yep.
I think if and when you're ready to do a site walk, though, I think you're going to want them to at least put some basic stakes out there as to where building corners might be and that sort of thing, so you get an idea of depth from the parcel.
Where things are or will be.
Yeah. But I think also it's a matter of giving them direction as to whether it's this design you like better or the previous design, because in order for them to set some parameters out in the field for you, they're going to know which design they're going on.
Les, what do you plan on doing on the Pine Hill roadside? Anything ever?
So, a couple of good questions. The one that we have, especially Chris couldn't make it tonight, is we wanted to ask the Planning Board about their thoughts on if I build a park, would the town maintain it? You know, maybe a walking trail around it, maybe a basketball court or something.
That's open field now?
It's open field now, yeah. And it's kind of, you know, it's a little hilly. It's kind of, it hasn't been hayed or mowed or anything in a long time, so it's not a very attractive parcel. I don't think I'll ever build on it. I mean, short of the zoning changing dramatically, I've used all the density, so that lot, that parcel really, in my mind, you know, you have a lot of houses there, a lot of residential houses. I mean, even if I just put a stone dust walking trail around it and, you know, a little soccer field or something, I mean, seems like it'd be a great spot for the kids to be able to play in. You know, I plan on, I'm heavily vested in this community.
Yeah, I know.
And continuing to, so...
You got 171 feet of frontage on the Pine Hill Road, right?
Correct.
But the density for the project is used up on Old Pine Hill.
Have used up all the density.
Yeah.
You have.
So, short of, you know, and we looked at, we looked at building a building on this side and on that side, and it just wasn't feasible. It wasn't feasible because of, that's not really big enough to get a building, get a parking lot, and get a runoff treatment, filter bed, or whatever we needed in there. So, in essence, that property really serves no purpose for me, other than density. And I thought it'd be great to, I don't mind building it. I don't mind spending a little bit of money, you know, I...
Are you looking at, like, cutting off a sliver of that and, like, gifting it to the town, as?
I don't have a problem with that either, if I can do that. I don't know, you know, because I've used the density, I don't know if I can then...
I see.
I was going to say, one, you want to be careful of the density issue, and, excuse me, if he could carve it off, would he be creating a non-conforming lot? Because it either doesn't have enough frontage, or enough depth, or enough acreage to meet the lot size requirement out there. But what I can do... But what I can do for the board is, and for Les is, communicate with the town manager and find out what his thoughts are about maintaining it. There may be some liability issues because it's, the land is still gonna be in Les's ownership, and I don't know what the thought's going to be about maintaining a park on someone else's land, but I'll, I'll try to...
Okay.
Some of that information out for you for the next meeting.
I can answer a couple of those. You know, the density is really the only issue.
Yeah.
If, if, if I had more density, which initially we thought we did, this certainly, you only need 100 feet of frontage here, and you certainly have the depth, you know, the area. So I, and I don't know if, you know, if you created a park, what you would need for density, if there's a requirement, you have to have a certain amount of square footage for a park.
No, it's just if, if it were split off as a lot, for example, for the town to own as part of that, can it be split off and meet the lot size requirements for the zone, which it would have to do, and still accommodate your density issues? So...
Right, I think we established already that, you know, we're using 15.9.
Exactly.
Unit's worth of density, so I, you know...
So I, I mean, I...
If you're gonna look into that, see if there's a way that we can do that, I'd be more than happy to, I mean...
Would a lease to the town?
Right.
From LRB? I still, I think a lease though counts the same as ownership, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, for this purpose, it, it might not, but it's really a matter of whether, from a policy standpoint, whether the town wants to do that. That's why I really would need to talk with the town manager.
Yeah, if he could explore that with the town manager.
Absolutely, yeah.
Including this lease question.
Right, I mean, I think it's great that Les wants to put a park over there, but if the town is going to maintain it, there may be some issues that we need to overcome or, or find out how that would be arranged.
The other thing I'm thinking of, there's actually, and I've heard a few people talk about it, with, with Didi Leather was there, was actually using that as a community garden area. Because there is a lot of density there and a lot of people don't have room, and I think the soil in that parcel is probably not bad. I know you've got a wet swath out.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the wet starts up in here, so this is, and, you know, if, if that's the best use of the property, I'm okay with that too, right?
Pretty easy.
I just, I see this parcel as, I drive by it, and it's not very attractive in the neighborhood of, you know, nicer houses, and, you know, people take care of the property over there. Like, I don't, you know, I don't want to mow it, I don't want to have to maintain it, but if I could do something that benefits the town and...
Okay.
You know, improves the neighborhood, great. So, so we, we can, you know, go back and forth with Chris about that, about if we can do that logistically or look at, you know, community garden or whatever, I'm, I'm all over any of those ideas.
And perhaps some volunteers in town would be willing to maintain it, and we certainly have a history in this town of people willing to do that, so that might be a possibility as well.
Yeah, if you think about that and you like it, I mean, if you contacted the, we have a Woodis Farmers Market and a really active group of, I'd say seven or eight young people that are driving the show there, and I know that's been talked about, you know, community gardens.
And we need a permanent home for the ice skating rink after all.
It's not flat enough.
I'll make it flat.
Well, if you know it, and you think about an ice skating rink, I'm sure we, we could work something out here.
If you make it within two inches of being flat.
I want an excavator, and I have a state-of-the-art technology in that excavator, I can make anything within three quarters of an inch.
Actually, you don't have to flatten anything, you can make, you could dig a pond. Yes, well, that's making it flat.
Then you don't have, wouldn't have to worry about getting bogged.
Pond, now I got more wackenin' something.
I know, right, yeah.
He just said he knows how to do it.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, you know, open for any discussions on what we can do with that property, as long as there's an ongoing cost to me, I don't mind any issue at all.
That takes care of the open space also, I mean, to me, it goes certainly a big contribution.
I think it'd be perfect, whatever it is we do, it's a skating rink or, or community gardens or just a park or, or whatever, you know, I think it'd be a fabulous addition. So, just one other thing I would like to speak to is, you guys asked about the change in the, you know, the configuration, and basically what happened was when we did the initial sketch, Chris just kind of put something down on paper, and he really wasn't looking much at the topography. So, once, once we really started dialing in the topography and where the land really drops, because, you know, it does drop considerably from here to here, I don't remember, six or eight feet. You know, just, three buildings just was not gonna, was not gonna work. As far as going out staking stuff off, we certainly can try to do that, but there are existing buildings on the property, so it may be difficult at this juncture to really, you know, show, you know, give a good representation of where these buildings are gonna land.
So, the two buildings versus the three original, the approximate?
What's that?
You're saying it's only an approximation of where they will land, is that what you're saying?
No, no, this, this is the plan that we want to go with going forward.
Okay.
What I'm saying is there's existing buildings on the site now.
Right.
There's a horn, a couple of barns.
We'll be able to stake them out.
The old Blue Seal Feeds building. So I don't know if we, if we, if it really could go out there and stake it off, the stakes might end up, you know, the corner of the building.
Well, I see what you're saying.
Where a building is.
Yeah. Les, on, in the, in this grassy area in between the two, the entrance and the exit, I assume it's gonna be like a grassy area, do you plan on keeping trees there or some type, or is it just gonna be clear cut and just open?
Interestingly, a friend of mine tells me that I should start looking at these projects and developing them much like a college campus, giving a campus feel that that's, you know, really makes a homey feel, and I'm like, well, what does that mean? And he goes, well, geez, just make it look like a campus. So I, I guess the, the short answer is I am going to try to figure out what to do there so that it's not just an open piece of field, whether it's trees or sitting benches or something. I'm really trying to, and I really, you know, I mean, you guys see my cemetery road project, I'm really trying to build quality housing that, you know, is attractive and people want to live in, and, you know, I, I've planned on being here for a long time, so... This project is double G apartments after my two daughters, so this is, you know...
So I know that...
I mean, I am gonna try to do something, I'm not sure what, I'm, I'm not very creative when it comes to that.
I do know that you, you did ask about the potential of waiving the sidewalk requirements last time that you were in. And now I could, I was very cryptic when I was talking about it before 'cause you weren't here, so now I could say 'cause you're here, but I was driving by and I was looking at both sides of the road there, and I see, you know, I... I'm not necessarily certain that that road is engineered to support sidewalks because of, there's no, there's no storm drains there, so I, I did send an email to the town manager in the selectmen asking for guidance, 'cause we all said we want some guidance from the selectmen on this sidewalk issue. And, and then Tom Wright did say, "All the development that's ever happened on Old Pine Hill Road, he doesn't ever know why there was never any sidewalks that were approved to go in there." But I did say, you know, there's no, I, I'm worried, like, if, if, if it's, we say, "You have to put sidewalks in front of your buildings," and then we have a rainstorm, and then we have like a pond in the middle of Old Pine Hill Road. And then he was also mentioning, "Well, when they extended the sidewalks up Pine Hill Road, they put in extra storm drains." So, I really didn't get a good, clear answer from him on it, so...
You just mentioned something that, in talking, what you were just talking about a few moments ago. If you were, obviously, you're gonna have a connection from these units down to the Pine Hill side of the property.
I'm not...
Where do the sidewalks on Pine Hill Road, where do they stop?
He's not gonna have a connection there.
That's not a given, because there's, with his wetlands there, so...
Yeah, but there's no way to cross that, walk and across it, or...
No.
Not with a formal, not with a formal crosswalk, ah, formal walkway anyway.
So, just going back to what I was saying, I really didn't get a clear answer. I guess I did, they want sidewalks, but at the same time, you know, we gotta make sure, so before we even entertain, I think, whether or not we should have sidewalks, I believe now we have a engineer on staff for the town of Berwick, right?
I believe the code officer is an engineer or has an engineering background, yes.
I would just like, so, I'd like him to take a look at that road and say, 'cause I know there's ditches on one side, but then there's ditches on the other side, but I think in front of you, you don't have any ditches over there.
You know, what everyone was saying was that, you know, right here, there are big ditches.
Right, right, so...
In front of the library and so forth, so I'm like, you know, again, it's not a major issue to me whether I put sidewalks in or I don't, on a project this scale, it's not a make or break deal, but I don't want to put a sidewalk to nowhere either.
Right. So, we'll just need to...
There may be some talking to be done with the town manager on that topic.
Can I change my mind about just wanting to do the park for the good of the town? And lower sidewalks?
Just covering all of our bases.
Well, I was, I think the plan seems to be moving along, and we started out with this, now we're here, and, I mean, there's a lot of engineering seems to have been done, you've been on-site now. When do we have a, a site visit and...
When, when you're ready for a site visit?
Ideally, it'd be nice to have some snow melting before we can get there.
Well, it will, yeah.
Early July?
Early July, yeah, exactly, we're not in Montana, but it feels like it right now.
On a storm Tuesday.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I could tell you right now, we're not meeting until the 5th, April 5th is the next meeting that we're gonna have.
I bet a nickel that by April 5th, there is no snow on the ground. You lost half the last storm already.
I, I also think that, um, I mean, it gives them, I, I, I'm sure Les wants to get moving on this sooner than later, but it also gives them a time to start, if, if this is the direction you're headed with this conceptual design, they could start putting some more engineering work into it. I'm not their engineer, but to me, what you were talking about, what Les is talking about, that front area is a perfect area for them to put some detention or storm, stormwater and maybe build it into, you know, some benches and some seating area.
I think the idea is that to, we're gonna do something behind the buildings.
Oh, really? See, I think it would make...
Based on my conversations with Jay Stevens, I think it's gonna be behind the building so that whenever, once it's filtered, it can go to the wetlands and runoff to whatever wetlands do, does have water.
Jeff, talk with Jay.
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a mix of both, I think, it depends, it all depends on which way the water flows.
Are you talking like dry wells?
But we can...
Are you talking like dry wells in the front, or...
Well, possibly some sort of LID, low impact development, you put in some rain garden there, and there's not gonna be standing water, and it's not gonna create a drainage issue per se next to the roadway, it's gonna suck it right down in and have some land, it would create some landscaping design there as well. It's just a thought.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think as the plans move forward, you know, we'll be showing some landscaping along the front and what needs to be done.
Right.
And talk with Les about, you know, going through that idea of, you know, what's the best kind of...
It's just the top who naturally goes that way, yeah.
Yeah, one thing you said, Les, is, I mean, the drainage all seems to want to go down to Pine Hill Road towards that one acre wetland you've got down there. How wet is that, and is that, has anyone been, it's hard to see right now, I know, but would that be a natural place to have a retention area that would look nice also?
I think we're gonna have to look at what the overall area of the development is, 'cause that's gonna dictate what kind of stormwater protections we need to put in there. Obviously, we're not gonna be, fill the wetland to do the tension, but I think the idea is our, our areas are, would be towards the back and create a, a situation where we can get infiltration and then use buffers where we can and, and try to keep it natural as it comes into that space.
Do we know which way the water flows in and out of this parcel, like, especially downhill off the parcel from that wetland, does it go into the, there's a lot just to the southeast there, that Berlin lot. It's quite a large lot, actually.
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but that was something that will be definitely covered when we do our drainage design, is looking at that.
Yeah.
Where the, where the outlet points are on the property and how we're gonna control water quality and quantity as what we need to do to meet the standard.
Do we want to meet on the 5th, April 5th? 5:30? What do you think about that? Does that work for you?
Sure it would, yep.
On-site?
Yeah, we'll meet on-site, at least we could see the driveways and what you're thinking for that.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to our guys, the surveyors, and have them kind of try to put stakes in the four corners of the buildings and, and along the center line of the roadway so we can get a feel of what that looks like.
Do we have anything else? Got anything else for us?
I think so.
All right, we'll see you on the 5th.
Thank you.
So, just in closing, so we'll, we'll discuss more about the park.
Yeah, I'll communicate.
He'll, he'll talk with the town manager soon as possible, and then we'll go from there.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, have a good one. New business. See you, Jeff. New business, sketch plan, minor subdivision, Riddlin Road, map R24, lot 5, applicant Corliss Properties. L.J.
Yes, so again, I apologize, I did not do a memo for you folks on this, I only received the information on Monday, and of course, with the storm on Tuesday, I was not in the office. But, um, I know this is only sketch and it's very preliminary discussions at this point, but the plan we have in front of us really raises a lot more questions for me than it does answers. It, there's a reference plan note on here that talks about a five-lot subdivision from Steve Brown back in April of 2004. If this is an amendment to that, then we need to see the whole subdivision. I was looking at the tax maps today before the meeting. The lot that is now formerly Gray, Gary and Elizabeth Temple, is exempt because it was subdivided in, in 04, so it's not part of the subdivision. But, um, the 2.1 acre, 2.07 acre, and then the lot across the street that's now a formerly Kennedy, I believe was less than five years split off, so that would need to be considered a lot in the subdivision. And that would suggest that the rest of the 31 acres that this is being carved out of would need to be shown as part of the subdivision. So I think there's a lot more work that's gonna be needed for the planning board to understand this better as to what's all going on there.
Okay, Mr. Corliss.
Yeah. Hi, uh, John Callum, I approached Mr. Brown about buying a piece of land, and the sketch that he has there, we just started on it. He says, uh, he said, "I got a lot you probably can divide in, in two lots, a minor subdivision." So, we did some running around to try and get it into here, but, uh, the purpose of, uh, I wanted to buy it, but he left it up to me to find out what we had to do. And I said, "Well, if it's only a minor subdivision, you know, I might be interested," but I didn't want to get into a major subdivision. So, if we could work something else that I could go in there and buy that lot and then cut that in half, that's what I'm really looking for.
So you're buying the 2.17 and the 2.07?
It's, uh, it's eight hun, it's right on the left-hand side of the Riddlin Road going from Pine Hill Road, and it should be around 800 and 900 feet.
Well, you're buying the two lots next to Gary and Elizabeth Temple? Those two lots, right?
All right, so that would be the, before, before the lot, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Right, I built that house.
I think what you're saying is that because it started out as a five-lot subdivision, you have to start with the five lots and then show those two within the five lots.
And then that...
It's, this becomes an amendment, we went through this about a year ago.
Correct, it becomes an amendment, it's still, technically, it would still, you'd have four lots as part of this process, which would keep it a minor subdivision, but those four lots include the two that Mr. Corliss is talking about here. The one on the other side of the gravel drive, and then the remaining 30-plus acres, which is the rest of the land, it's not exempt, and it would have to be shown as a lot.
On the plan.
Yeah, correct.
Even though it's not being built on.
Correct, so, we'd need to see that as well as where, where the other five lots are that were previously subdivided out, which I think might be the ones that are to the, on this plan, to the south.
So would that five-lot subdivision then become a three-lot subdivision?
Uh, no, five lots were previously subdivided. This is now, this would be considered an amendment to that, which you're adding more lots.
Oh, these lots don't exist right now?
Correct, correct.
We're taking a, a chunk of that.
That's right.
Gotcha, okay.
That's right, my, my assumption is, based on what this is saying, is that, um, again, I can't, I apologize, I can't remember the name of that road, it's War...
Wabosta?
Wabosta.
Is that how you pronounce it, Wabosta?
I think, based on what I'm seeing, and again, I don't have enough information here, the reference plan is referencing five lots, that's what Wabosta is. So, my assumption is this was a large main piece of property that was previously subdivided. So, my assumption is, this was a large, main piece of property that was previously subdivided, and that's now an amendment to, this would now be an amendment to that subdivision. But we need to see the whole, being the additional 30-acre parcel up in here, and it would be, so it would be 1, 2, 3, and 4.
So, if you had a full property survey of the 30 or whatever it is acres.
Correct.
And it looks like one exists, because you're down to, like, fractions of a square foot now in each lot. I mean, it's been surveyed and figured out, you know, engineering-wise, right?
Right.
So, to me, it would be a five-lot subdivision, which is a major subdivision, morphing into a six-lot subdivision amended.
Well, it morphing into a 5, 6, 7, 8, 9-lot subdivision.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, that's all right.
Two lot, I was saying, adding, taking that one and making two lot of it.
Correct, but it's an amendment, it's not a full-blown.
So, these two lots that John would like to buy then is part of the Temple lot. It's not part of the 30 acres.
From, well, I don't know that. And that's because there's no notes here, other than that reference plan note, and there's no other information that really.
The first step is a look at the full survey.
Exactly.
So, who's the applicant, then? Is it the original owner of the subdivision?
No, it could be Mr. Corliss, he can do the subdivision, anybody can do that. But I think the more importantly is, we just need to know the big picture here, is, you know, what's being carved out of what, and how many lots are we really talking? And I think at this point, it's still very preliminary, and we don't know that.
So, but we are assuming that in Alfred, in the courthouse, there is a five-lot subdivision that Steve Brown had approved in 2004, that shows the 30 acres and the five lots.
Correct.
Seem to be approved.
It's actually cited as Plan Book 293 and page 12.
You're going to have to go back to your archives in your basement.
2004, that's not that long ago.
Pull that box out.
And I'm sure whoever's been doing the survey, you know, from Mr. Corliss, can do that research and do that work.
Yeah.
But I think there's a bigger picture here that.
So, we don't even know how many lots it is right now, but it's going to be, okay.
I was just, I didn't want to really get involved, I just looked for some house lots that I had, I could sell, like, build houses. And he says, if you want to go through the, I said, I might go minor, but I'm not going to get into details.
Well, I don't think it's really, your issue's going to be a minor versus a major, it's going to be taking an existing five-lot subdivision of 30 acres, taking one of those pieces out of there and subdividing that into two.
That's what I'm believing is what it is.
But technically, if the soil, if it passes soils and all that stuff, technically, there's probably, it's like the one we did on Cranberry Meadow about a year or two ago.
Yes.
It wouldn't be much different, yeah.
The one that was abutting ill.
Have you been on, have you been looking at the soils on there?
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem, because I know the fellow that takes all my soils tests is, I don't want to have a problem like that. I wouldn't be interested if there was a problem.
I think the ball is back in Mr. Corliss's court to try to get his survey, if he wants to continue to pursue it, to get his surveyor to pull this information together, so we have a bigger picture, if you will, of what's going on.
Sound good?
I didn't quite catch it off.
We need to, whether it's your surveyor or yourself, but we need to get a bigger picture of what's going on with the previous five-lot subdivision, and how that plays into what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, because that's all, that's new to me, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
So, I'll check with him tomorrow and find out.
Okay, and if need be, he can contact me at Southern Maine Planning.
Yep, all right. But my main concern was, was that we can do that, though, if we go through all of them.
Technically, anything can be done, if you go through all the hoops that need to be gone through, yeah.
But like, about a year ago, in Cranberry Meadow, we actually had a subdivision, and it was actually older than this one by quite a bit.
From the 80s.
Yeah, from the 80s. And they, one of the lots was large enough to be re-subdivided, which means it was, we started out going down the road of a 2-to-1 subdivision, but actually, it ended up being an amended subdivision, and it's no harder to do than starting from scratch. If anything, it may be easier.
Correct, yeah.
You have the perimeter survey done.
That's right, yeah.
Well, I'll check into that further then. Long as I don't, I don't need no major subdivision. I just want to keep busy.
All right, thanks.
I'll find out about that.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, informational items from the board that I would like to share. Anybody have anything they'd like to share? I'd like to welcome Niles back.
Yeah.
Did you see that we talked to you on camera, did you watch?
I saw, yes, yes, I did indeed, thank you.
You stopped short of putting a photograph of your next, over here. Anybody? All right, no public here tonight for the second public comment session. Next on the agenda would be the adjournment. I'll second. Further discussion, all in favor?